Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting of the Wadsworth Planning Commission will please come to order. The first item on our agenda is public participation. I would note that we have a public hearing set for 6:00 this evening regarding a conditional zoning certificate and site plan for extra storage on Quadrille Drive. And anyone in the audience who's come and watched us speak under that public hearing will have an opportunity to do so. But if there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the planning commission and any other appropriate topic, we'd kind of hear from you. You can come forward to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing that, I'll move on with the agenda. Under all business, we have the minutes of the January 27th meeting. The 10th meeting will be sent on later. If there's no additions or corrections or a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes as prepared.
Second? Moved in second, and all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we now have a public hearing set for 6:00 PM for conditional zoning certificate and site plan, extra storage, public storage facility, city lots 68, 59, Quadrille Drive, the I-2 heavy industrial district. Mr. Kaiser?
Okay, as noted at our last meeting, this project involves public storage, which is a conditionally permitted use in industrial and C3 zoning districts. And this particular proposal, here is the site, it's on Quadrille Drive, on the west side of the road. It's pretty much the last vacant site on the street. You can see up in the northwest corner, there is a detention basin, which I do believe holds water. I'm not sure it was actually designed that way. I know there's been some blockages, but it serves as a detention basin for part of this facility as well as Quadrille Drive improvements. So as a conditional zoning certificate or a conditional use, planning commission, public hearings require commissions level. And typically, we look at a number of things, the general standards, and then specific standards, and then site issues. In this particular case, let me pull up the plans here. Here's what's proposed for the site. Proposed six buildings, one point of ingress/egress off of Quadrille Drive. The site would be enclosed, the fence would be gated with a locked box. And we'll deal with stormwater management and some of the other issues a little bit later, but in general, here's the layout. And later on in your packet, you'll see some floor elevations of what the units would look like. Typical storage units, overhead doors on one side, and really, that's about it. So in terms of general standards, these are conditions that apply to law conditional uses. I'm not going to go into detail. You can read them on pages one and two of the staff report, because really, the site is bounded on three sides by other industrial properties that have already been developed. Really, to the west, they are at the corporate limits, so there is one township parcel, roughly eight and a half acres, that is on the west side of this property. I'll just pull this back up. You can see it right here. But overall, it's in an area that allows this type of use, and it's going to be fairly well-hidden from public view. Moving on to the specific conditions, Section 154, 546, Paragraph B1 applies to all conditional uses. I think it's more of an extension of these conditional standards, but there's some of the issues I think we should have the applicant address as part of this hearing. It indicates that, okay, there shouldn't be a lot of excess noise or fumes or anything coming from the property. So they talk about loudspeakers which cause annoyance or hazard shouldn't be permitted. I don't believe any are proposed with this particular development. Same thing with lighting. There is a photometric plan requirement that will be submitted as part of the civil site plan review. Right now, they don't show any light standards, so I would think any lighting on the site would be wall packs on the buildings. Typically, they're far enough away, and they're located on the north and south walls, so I think any off-site impacts would be minimal, but a photometric plan would show that. Signs are not proposed at this time. I imagine there will be one near the entrance. Parking and loading, we'll talk about later. And this section also says that all conditional uses must comply with the district requirements in which it's located. This thing does meet all of the I-2 requirements. There's probably going to be some variances required to some of the conditional zoning provisions that we'll talk about here in a minute. Paragraph F, talking about coazy industrial uses, doesn't apply, and no conditional use will be permitted, which is not compatible with adjacent uses. As I've indicated, it's in an industrial parkway, so I think for the most part, we are, there's not going to be any issues there. So moving on to some of the specific conditions that apply to storage facilities, and the applicant did provide a written statement addressing this, there's really going to be no outside storage proposed. Everything would be within the enclosed buildings. Fencing, I think I mentioned that earlier, the entire lot would be enclosed within a fence to prevent unauthorized access. Want to talk with the applicant a little bit more about the fencing and site access, and that was one of the fire department's comments as well. I don't recall, I assume the fence will be at least six feet in height, and as I've mentioned, there will be a locked gate, so I think there'll be some type of electronic key card access into the site. This section also talks about landscaping. There would be a landscaping plan that would have to be approved by the architectural design committee, but I'd just point out that potential landscaping is going to be tough on this site because, again, the property that would be most affected would be to the west, in the township. But there's a, I believe there's a, can't read at that scale, hold on. There is an overhead electric easement that runs along the west property line. I believe that's, looks like that's 20 feet. There's also, in yellow, a stormwater management easement. So getting landscaping along the property line may be a little bit difficult, there's already the detention pond there. It's something the applicant's architects would have to look at, and again, since none of the buildings or lighting should face the west, I think any landscaping requirement would be minimal. Loading and unloading, typically for these types of uses, that takes place in front of the man doors of the units. And in this particular case, all of the buildings are, just have entry on one point. You can see the shared drive that runs between the buildings. We'll talk a little bit more in the site details, but the paved area between the buildings, very large enough to accommodate two-way traffic flow and potential stacking and storing on either side, should that be required. Again, Paragraph E in that section talks about the outdoor lighting, which we discussed earlier, and the need for photometric plan. That'll be part of the civil plan review. This section also requires storage should be limited to personal property only, your household items, yard maintenance items, and other things like vehicles, boats, trailers, campers. Talk a little bit here in a minute about the size of these structures, but I believe they are designed, they could easily store a boat or camper within the structure itself. The structures need to meet all applicable city and state building and fire requirements. That'll be determined as part of their building plan review that'll take place with the Dinah County Building Department. And Paragraph E of this section, that's where we get into the need for a variance. The way the code's written, each individual building shall not exceed a length of 250 feet or a width of 40 feet. As proposed, all of the buildings are at least 50 feet deep, so a little bit wider than what the code requires. So that would indicate a need for a variance. Also, two of the buildings, these two along the south, the one is 420 feet in length and the other's 440. So those obviously exceed the 250-foot requirement. I would note, though, that the plans show that those two larger buildings do have an internal firewall separation. So from the building code perspective, they are two separate buildings. So when they go to look at the plan reviews, they're going to look at codes, it's four buildings, but the zoning code doesn't make that distinction, so there would be a need for a variance there. And I don't see a problem with what they are asking, and it's certainly a variance that we would support. I think doing so, pushing those two buildings, especially the southern two, together like that, allows them to maintain that 75-foot front setback requirement. So I don't have any problems with the variance request.
The Port of Zoning Appeals would take that?
They would have to take that, and that's one of the conditions of approval. Another item that the BZA should look at is the next paragraph, where it talks about the interior drives, and I don't know the logic behind the code when it was established, but it says, well, internal traffic flow should be in one direction only between the buildings. But the way this lays out, and it makes sense, there is two-way traffic flow between these buildings, and the pavement width is 55 feet, which is nearly double what we would require for two lanes. For instance, in a parking lot, with parking on either side, you'd have two 12-foot travel lanes. So again, there's more than enough room for the travel lanes as well as the temporary parking along each building frontage to handle loading and loading. So again, that's another thing, I think, just to be on the safe side. They've got to go to the BZA, I think the BZA should look at that, but again, I have no issues with the proposed variance request.
Jeff, I have a question for you then. And that image would help. So between proposed storage building two, which is the second building down from the top, and building three and building four, understand the roadway identification, but what is the white space between those two buildings?
We're going to have to talk to the applicant. I would assume that's going to be grass.
Okay.
Green space.
Yeah, thank you.
So yeah, it's the hatched areas that represent the pave, so my thought was that these are probably going to be green, possibly even graded in such a way as to provide some drainage trails. The applicant can talk about that in a little bit. So yeah, so really, there vehicular access between building one and two, and then between building three, four, and five, and then building six, which is the southernmost, would just have the access from one side. But again, there's more than enough room to maintain two-way traffic flow and more than enough parking and loading space. So except for those variances that are needed, and I think they're valid reasons for granting those, I don't see any other concerns with this project. So moving on to some of the site review and site development issues, just a few things I want to point out. One, plan scaling. These plans didn't really scale out to a standard engineering scale. They'll have to do that for the civil plan review. The zoning compliance, we talked about the need for the variances, and I think that request would be appropriate. Staffing and site access, the only thing I had there, as I'd mentioned, I think the gate will be, the entry will be gated, and apparently, the facility won't be staffed at all. I didn't see any room on here for a manager's office, so I think it's something we want to talk to the applicant about. I believe this would be, and again, what the hours would be. If it's an unstaffed facility, is it accessible 24 hours a day with a key pad? That's something we should have the applicant explain a little bit tonight and then provide a written answer before we move on with civil site plan review. Stormwater management, that's probably one of the biggest issues with this project. As I noted, there is a detention basin here in the northwest corner of the site, but going back, some previous records uncovered by the engineering department for this particular subdivision showed that the high watermark of the basin was right here in the orange, at the 990-foot mark, okay? So without any grading, half the site's going to be within the detention basin, which obviously they can't do. So we've been talking to the applicant for about eight to 10 months, and they will have to come up with a plan to show how the grading would be revised and possibly, you know, there'd be a lot of grading filling, probably a lot of land brought in to adjust the grade to make sure that the detention basin not only meets its current requirements, but they'll also have to show that, okay, is there enough capacity, what capacity you need for what you're doing to the site as well. So that's an issue that they're really going to have to take up in a lot more detail with our engineering department, but I just wanted to make sure that the commission was aware of that, and those issues were discussed in the engineering department comments. Sanitary sewer, I think noted that, or at least it was implied, that since there's no manager's office, there was no sanitary sewer extended into this facility. I don't believe it exists on Quadrille, except a little bit further south of the site. So basically, at this point, if sanitary sewer is not needed, they wouldn't have to do anything. There is a, I believe, the way the topography, or excuse me, the sanitary flow falls, the building north of them, I think it was at one time online marketing, I don't know what they're called now, they actually have a force main in Quadrille Drive that takes the sewage down to the public sewer closer to Suprema, which is just south of the site. So there'd be a lot involved, but if the applicants can show that the county doesn't require, the building and fire codes don't require the facility to be maintained, and therefore, they don't need restroom facilities or water, water would be fine. Otherwise, they'd have to amend the plans to address that whole sanitary issue. And then water line, fortunately, I didn't highlight these, but they are showing that there would be three eight-inch water mains coming onto the site from Quadrille Drive. There's one here between buildings two, two, three, and four, I believe, and that line comes in and terminates with a hydrant. There's one here between buildings five and six that would come in and terminate in a hydrant just in front of those buildings, five and six. And then a third one near the south property line that comes in, terminates here at the, near the central portion of the last building here. That would provide the 300-foot radius required to protect all of these buildings. The only issue that came up, but it wasn't really discussed by either engineering or the fire chief, would be, does it make sense to lose those three lines? I think that's something that would, they would have to discuss and determine in the civil plan review. They do believe there's enough flow and pressure as is, so perhaps it's not needed. Obviously, the shorter run would probably be kept out of the loop, but it's just something that I bring up, that it may be an issue during civil plan review. Other utilities, I think I've noted that electric and telecom services are located along the west property line. That's where they will tap in. I'm sorry, the one hydrant's here, this is the tap-in for the electric. Environmental conditions, again, as part of their civil plan review, any environmental studies that have been done. I don't know if there's any wetlands on the site. I believe there was a repair and setback with the changes to our regulations that may have disappeared altogether or seriously shrunk to near more than 10 feet. But if there are wetlands on the site, obviously, they would have to get O EPA approval to fill under the national permit if it's less than a half an acre. Site lighting, we've talked about a couple times, so a photometric plan would be required. Project phasing, one thing that wasn't discussed is, what's the intent? Is it to do all the site work and then do all the buildings at once, or kind of do two or three at a time and then continue as demand necessitates? And then finally, architectural design, review, and signage, those things will be reviewed by the ADC. This time, nothing definitive has been submitted, and again, there's really no materials or color information regarding the exterior of the building, so that's not a big issue and that can be addressed a little bit later. In terms of the other review agencies, again, the fire department commented, and they would require access to the gated driveway via Knox Box, or apparently, there's something, an electronic Knox key access code. And the engineering department comments, which were attached, their main concerns involved the stormwater management and site grading, especially given the detention basin on the site, and what is the capacity of that basin, and how are they going to modify the site. Again, other federal review and state agency approvals are required as needed. That includes Army Corps for Wetlands and Ohio EPA. They do get involved in public wireline extensions as well, so their approval will be needed. Again, there would be easements for any public utilities outside of the right of way, so the three water lines that we talked about a few minutes ago, those would have to be placed within a public easement. And again, at the end of the project, they would need as-built drawings of the site and stormwater calculations and verification. Again, they noted these are conditions that would now be addressed as part of the civil plan review. And finally, the ADC committee would review the building elevations, landscaping, and signage, once we've got complete plans. So with that in mind, I really didn't see any big issues with this particular site. The key issues involving the BZA can be addressed here at the future, and the large site development issues, mainly stormwater management and grading, will obviously have to be addressed as part of the civil plan review before they can even start construction. So with that in mind, I would, unless you hear something tonight at the public hearing that requires you to want to gather a little more information, I would recommend approval of the conditional zoning certificate and site plan for extra storage with the four conditions as noted in the staff report. So that's all I have right now.
Any questions from Mr. Kaiser, the commission at this point?
I have a single question. Jeff, does, we talked about it previously, the city has this gate ordinance. Do you know if the gate here complies with that ordinance? I would think it might not be triggered based upon the nature of the commercial establishment?
I did pull it up, and I looked at it, and I didn't see that it would come into play. That's mainly at the end of a public street where there's no place to turn around, and obviously, I think it's something that we'll have fire and engineering look at, but there should be enough room, about 15, 20 feet, for a vehicle coming in to pull in and then do the T-turn around. But I didn't see anything in the gate policy, when I looked at it a few weeks ago, that would affect the issue.
At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to make any comments, if there's anything you would like to make.
AJ Jackson, 7163 Beach Road, Wadsworth, Ohio.
Again, the first question, are you familiar with all the conditions with the staff report that they accepted?
Yes.
I guess the only thing I would ask, staff indicated you'd sent a letter regarding that there would be no maintenance or repairs permitted within the facility, is that correct?
What do you mean?
That nobody could go in there and rebuild their engines, maintenance, repair of the vehicle.
I got you, okay. And you would need like a statement from us, a letter? Or am I just saying?
Yeah, I think you may have addressed it, but if, there's something else you have to address in writing, but basically, that these units are going to be used for storage of personal equipment owners.
Correct, yeah, we don't want anyone working in there. Yeah, this is, yeah, this is just for storage.
We need a letter.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, that brings all kinds of other issues into the equation. Any other comments that you would like to make?
Yeah, I think we touched base on the green space, yeah, that does show all our green space there. That cut down on a lot of the water management as well, so that helped. That'll do, give us a little bit of landscaping in front of those buildings as well to dress up the site, so it's not just a cold building with concrete. We talked about the west elevation, talking about landscaping on that backside there. That property level is significantly higher than our property currently, and there is vegetation there already that we're not going to touch since in that easement between properties. And I don't think we'll have an issue there as far as, you know, with the residential side on the backside of us. Yeah, we talked about the variance we're looking for for the 50-foot units instead of the 40 feet. A lot of the new modern RVs and camper, stuff like that, are above that 50-foot or 40-foot mark, and inside, these actually buildings are going to be slightly shorter than 50 because the building itself is 50, so the interior is actually 48 feet. So if we did 40 foot, that puts it down by 38, and that cuts out a lot of those new modern campers that people have, so I think the 50 for us would be beneficial, absolutely, to have. I talked about the 24-hour access, not having someone on site. Yeah, will be 24-hour access with the Knox Box. We touched base with the fire chief saying they need the Knox Box there in the gate, and everyone has to have codes to get in. Everyone will have individual key cards, so that's theirs, they can get in, it automatically closes behind them. We will have surveillance there for our sake, just in case anything do happen, if we're not, obviously, we're not there, so we will have that, just in case accidents happen, stuff gets stolen, something like that, but.
I assume there would then be some wall pack lighting on these buildings?
Yep, so I have that, yep, we will have wall pack, like you said, on the north and south sides. There will be emergency lighting over all the exterior doors, come on in case power outages with a battery pack, so that'll have that. And then, yeah, there'll be, on Norton site, we will have a photometric design for review for them to show all that, and obviously, within the parameters. Yeah, we did have wetland delineation done, no wetlands were noted in our report, just besides the retention pond itself. We talked about how we wanted to do this, is it all going to be land prep and build up buildings all at once? Our plan is to prep the entire lot itself, put in all the drainage and crocs, everything that's needed, and then put this into phases, so basically, starting with... that's needed, and then put this into phases, so basically, starting with the north buildings, the two buildings there, and then switch to the middle buildings and finish up with the last one towards the south. That's the proposed plan, let's do that in phases, within 12 to 18 months to be completely done.
The idea of the build-up time for all that?
12 to 18 months, yes, sir. Yep, yep, that's our plan. You noted a building we don't have yet on our design there, but for the buildings, they will be metal roof and siding. We're looking into a black metal roof and a tan color of the siding with a wainscot of black on the bottoms of all the buildings, and the doors, overhead doors and everything to match.
Do the internal walls go to the ceiling?
Internally?
Yeah.
Yes, that'll all be white metal inside, everything. Yep, everything will be insulated.
Each unit is enclosed.
Correct, yep, yeah, each unit will be individually insulated with interior walls, yep. Yeah, so these will, they'll be built, one solid building, open span, the whole thing, and then once we're filling up, because some units can be double units, or a triple unit with no walls separating. We've had that on previous projects we've had, people want double units, you know, twice as wide, so they have 40 feet wide by the 50 feet to store, you know, multiple stuff in there because they have lots of stuff, but they will be built and then built as we're renting them.
Can you tell us about your other storage facilities?
Sure, what do you need to know?
Space-wise, are they larger, smaller?
They are 16 foot wide by 50 foot in deep, but they have the man doors on the opposite sides of the doors, of the overhead doors, so we wanted, we didn't think that worked out too well. It worked for that property, the way we had to space it because the buildings had to be shorter, so we, you lose, you lose a unit with putting man doors on the front, but you gain that 20 foot wide. We noticed the 16 foot wasn't too wide, like I said, it steps in once you start putting walls, so it's about 15 foot wide, so this will give us, you know, a nice interior size of roughly 19 feet, which is a lot more comfortable for people packing equipment in and stuff like that, and having racks to store, and also get vehicles in the center. But, yeah, we have, I think there's 49 units of that over that, and they're just like that.
They get to walk underground.
What's that?
They get to walk underground.
No, we did do concrete in between those buildings. Those didn't have a green space on those other ones. There was concrete poured in between everything there. The green space in here helped us out with a lot of the water calculation, just that much green space, cut down on a lot of water if we had hard surface there instead. Yeah, those buildings have gated, no manned person there, they have wall packs, there's surveillance cameras, pretty much same setup we're doing here, same color scheme, same thing, yeah.
Okay. And those, do those buildings have drains, floor drains?
Interior, no, sir. Nope. Yeah, none of these will have any, no drainage. Like you said, we don't want anyone working in there. It's supposed to be a storage unit, yeah, it's not a commercial building space, yeah, yeah.
I just wondered about cleaning them out between tenants or something like?
Yeah, it's a real quick, since they're all interior metal, everything stays pretty clean. We usually take a pressure washer real quick, out the door, sweep it out, whatever we have to do. A lot of our tenants have done a really good job of keeping them clean for the past five years, that one's been up, so they've, it's a pretty simple cleanup once someone moves out.
They bring their own water.
What's that?
They bring their own water.
Yeah, if they need to, yeah. Yep, yeah, that cuts down on a lot of stuff, yeah, we don't want people cleaning stuff in there, or trying to have a detail business or something like that running out of there where they're in and out with a bunch of cars, try to cut down on a lot of that riffraff going in and out there, it's supposed to be just storage, so.
Do you require any kind of inspection so you know that what they say they're storing is actually there?
Yep, so we have contracts we have written up with the tenants that show that state dollar stuff, there's no flammable stuff, there's not, you're not allowed to work in here, VOs can't be parked overnight, nothing like that, this isn't, you know, you can't sleep here, obviously, all the stuff's in their contract, so, and that we can terminate anytime, yep.
Is there any heating or?
Yep, these will be, these will be electrically heated, they'll have electric wall heaters on here, yep. And each unit's completely insulated, the garage overhead doors are insulated, everything's insulated, so they, and they're individually metered by us, we have main power come in, we individually meter every unit for them, and then they get billed monthly.
Heated but not air-conditioned?
Yeah, no way to see, they actually stay quite cold. They're very well insulated, and middle summer, it's, it's a.
I think it's summertime.
It's a cool, it's a cool 75 there in the summer, yep, it's nice in there, yep.
So stormwater management, with that basin and that high watermark that somewhat divides through the property?
Yep.
I manage, that's a challenge for the process.
Yep, so.
Can you speak to us a little bit about that?
Sure, absolutely. When we first looked into this property, it didn't seem, obviously, once we get, engineering looks a lot gradual, a lot more than it was, but with what we're planning on doing, because the land in the southeast corner is actually a lot higher there, too, so we have enough to start moving that dirt, to start filling in, and we will have to truck in dirt, fill dirt to raise it up to make that grade, and that'll raise that bank of that retention pond just on that side, and give us our requirement we need for the water management that we, that currently has.
So you expect that basin to be pretty deep, then, I would think, after you improve it?
I don't, I don't know the exact footage, it will be fenced in front of it, so there's not going to be anyone messing around going in there, so I'm not worried about that, but yeah, could be, if it was full, I guess 10 feet deep, if it was full.
I imagine that the banks would be rather.
Pretty steep.
Rather steep.
Yeah, we want to fence that off that way, yeah, nothing's going up there, yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, thank you. At this.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. If there's any, anyone in the audience who wishes to address the addition, this is the project, Gaur Khan, if you come forward to the podium, give us your name and address for it.
Yeah, Herbert Gabriel, channel manager down at Eppen Furnaces on 224 Quadrille Drive. I just came here today to, you know, listen to the stormwater issue, glad it was mentioned several times. We do get quite a bit of water down there, even on Quadrille Drive itself, you know, this time of the year can be standing water. So I guess I'm curious also if all the water that goes towards Quadrille Drive, you know, how that will be managed to make sure we don't get more water. These Quadrille Drive is made out of these concrete patches, and, you know, we have standing water, trucks go by, water is underneath these concrete pads, and then you have this, you know, wall of water shooting up, so I guess that would be my concern, just stormwater management towards Quadrille Drive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one else, do you like to, any last comments? Yes, please.
Can I say my name again, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, state it again?
Harold.
That's okay. All the water will be shedding from.
You need to address the planning.
I'm sorry.
If you can listen.
The water from Quadrille Drive will be going away heading west towards that retention pond, everything is pitched away from the road, so no water will be shedding anywhere onto the road at all. Everything is pitched towards the retention pond. All the crocs and everything are set to go to retention pond and exit onto College Road, College Street, sorry.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have the recommendation for approval of this project with four conditions. No other discussion from the commission, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission approve the conditional zoning certificate and site plan for the extra storage on City Lot 6859 Quadrille Drive, subject to the four staff conditions.
Second, you've heard the motion with the second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all for coming. Good luck on your project. All right, moving on with our agenda. The next item is a zoning text amendment, a new planned unit development regulations to replace the existing one, I won't read all that, and we need to set a public hearing.
Mr. Kaiser? Yes, we did introduce this at the last meeting. I think we all know some of the reasons behind it, we've not really had the success we wanted to have with our existing PUD regs, they don't really function as true planned unit development regulations, and so what's been proposed is a, basically, is what I call a true PUD. It replaces whatever the underlying zoning is, and unfortunately, I gave away my last angle here. Here we go. Passed out. So, yeah, so the purpose was to try and create a set of regulations and spell out, okay, what are the purposes and objectives, what are the basic things that we're looking for? And what would really dictate what a person that develops comes in with, really, instead of looking at specific zoning and specific, you know, lot sizes, specific densities, that look more towards the comprehensive plan, and what does comprehensive plan suggest is appropriate for this area? What kind of densities, what types of layouts? So that's going to be what drives the requests that come before planning commission. And then, as a, as a true PUD, it actually functions as a zoning text amendment, so once you've looked at it, at the general plan, at the proposalist uses, proposed, you know, requirements, or what they say, hey, these are our lot sizes, or these are the kind of homes we want to have, after you've looked it over and kind of given it your yea or nay, you send, you forward that over to the city council, and they will look at it, because if they, you know, they agree, then they would adopt, whatever they would adopt is the PUD would replace the underlying zones. Instead of the city now is an R1, it would no longer be R1, it would be, you know, whatever, fill in the blank, PUD. And the text in that particular district would be the approved uses, the, you know, various setbacks, and the general layout would follow the development plan, which serves the function of a preliminary plan. So upon final, final construction, whatever the develops should pretty much mimic what they have said they would do, the uses that they would do. So really, a lot of the changes take place with the whole process, the pre-application meeting, then a preliminary discussion meeting, review before planning commission, and then your conclusion and recommendation, and then it goes on to city council for their review. And it also talks about the additional review processes, such as the, you know, the civil site plan review, you're not exempt from that, ADC review for any, any multifamily commercial or non-residential type uses, as well as landscaping, and then even final plan approval. The general plan would serve as that preliminary plan, but streets and the lots would have to be laid out on a final plan, which should, again, pretty much, you know, agree to what they've shown on the, on that preliminary plan. I did review this, Mr. Cummings did come into my office last week, and we kind of went over it. We made a few minor changes to it, and they're the ones that were highlighted in your staff report. I don't know if we really want to get any into details, but I think originally, we had some exemptions for non-residential parking, if that use was within half a mile of a public parking lot or whatever you use. Thinking about it, maybe a half mile might be a little too far, so we moved it down to a quarter mile. That's fairly standard practice, at least in the planning world, they say, yeah, everyone, you know, if you can put things within the 15-minute walk, people will go, 15-minute walk for average folks is about a quarter mile. Changed some, you know, added some clarity between, you know, what counts as common open space and what doesn't. We didn't want any buffering areas along street fountains, you know, or any yard areas to be included, that's just, you know, standard practice. We wanted mostly the common areas to be located in the center or, you know, the rear of the buildings where most of the folks could have a pretty straight, straight access to it. I think there was one other change that we made, oh, for multifamily and non-residential sites, wanted to make sure that there was at least some type of limitation to keep them proportional to the, you know, the standard single-family unit residential uses, whether they're condos or extended lots. 5% seemed to be rather small when you take an average size, you know, 58% development, 5% of that would be 2.5%, that doesn't mean a whole lot. So we upped that to 15%. 15% of the land area of a PUD could be set aside for non-residential or multifamily residential use. Again, everything's going to come to planning commission, the applicant's going to say, here's what we want to do, and here's where, and here's my justification for it, this is what your plan says. Utilities, you've got a utility plan that shows that these areas can be served, and therefore makes sense if you, you know, have higher density here, lower density here, or really in this open space because we can't, you know, it would be not cost-effective to extend to others. So anyhow, I think we're at a point where, because of some pending annexation and projects have been moved through the pipeline to try and get this under review and send something to city council for their look and adoption. This was already brought to their attention a couple months ago, I think at the first economic development committee meeting in January, when we kind of set forth the, you know, kind of did the schematic, here's what we want, the, here's the certain sections that we want in the new PUD regs. So this is just kind of filling in that framework. So I don't know if there's any questions now, or we want to set a public hearing for this. Again, the next meeting on March 10, probably have to be seven because of previous council committee meetings.
All right, you're also suggesting on the zoning text amendments, we need to set a public hearing, do we want to do that both nights?
I think we can, because I'm not expecting a lot of input on either, so I think we can have, have both those hearings at one time.
I guess from current, the previous discussion, we're going to that at 7:00, right?
Yes.
Or you could delay it two weeks for the next meeting.
We could, yeah.
You mean it's sort of like a deadline to get this done, or?
In terms of, which one are we talking about? Are we talking about the PUDs?
PUD, I think, yeah.
The PUDs?
Yeah.
I'd like to move those forward as soon as possible, so that's the one that, yeah, I think I've got set for 7:10.
Yeah, you just can't be there, right?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I might have to make adjustments.
I'm sorry, we set that at 7:00 PM, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's a planned unit development.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the zoning text amendments.
Sorry?
Item two.
Item two? Okay. That's also an amendment that affects Section 154-580 of the zoning code, and that's the part that spells out, what does the planning commission, what does city council do when notifying the public for a zoning map or text amendment? And looking at what the Ohio revised code said, well, it's silent as they purged the city planning regulations, but they do spell out what a city council needs to do, which is to, they give a 30-day notice of a public hearing, and that ORC 713.12 also says that if an amendment intends to rezone or redistrict 10 or less parcels of land, the legislative authority needs to notify all 10 parcels and the ones surrounding them of the intent. Okay, that makes sense because it's a fairly small area, and the notification process is not overly rigorous. When you get above that, you don't have that direct notification required. And I think that's what we're trying to do, is bring our zoning code into compliance, because right now, our zoning code requires the planning commission to notify everyone that's being rezoned, whether it's 10. that's being rezoned, whether it's 10 parcels, 20, 30, or more, plus the ones around it. That's well more than what would be notified by city council, okay? And so to me, it's, and there are, I think, other ways to get that notification out there, not only the general public notices and newspaper, but today, we have social media, we have websites. I've posted public hearing notices for some zoning amendments on our websites in the past. So I think there are some, you know, some more effective ways and less onerous, you know, to, for instance, to notify someone of a, but say we redistricted all of our C3 properties, created something else out there, to notify all of those folks who are here in this area. So the proposed amendments to 154-580, basically, just add the language right from the ORC, and it puts the, I guess, makes the planning commission just follow the same procedure. If we're looking at a zoning amendment of 10 or less parcels, you do public notices to those 10 parcels. If it's more than that, we just do the general notification. And that's about it, plus I think we just cleaned up a little bit of the language that was in there. Again, city council, you know, that section B154-580D included the language that was taken from the ORC. I just changed that to say that, you know, council's notice of any public hearing shall be given in accordance to the provisions noted in ORC 713.12. And then, again, noting that if a application is not introduced by a member of city council or the planning commission, there would be a zoning amendment fee. Obviously, things initiated by the city wouldn't require that. So those are really the text changes, is just to kind of, one, bring us, bring us into general accord with what the ORC requires from legislative authorities, and, you know, to make that notification process less onerous.
Well, for no other reason, it would seem we aren't even system.
That's how I feel, because I think, you know, if, for instance, if we notify.
You don't want to make the argument to say that we, we should be more informative than city council provides for.
We may change this several years ago. If you may recall, there was a provision in the code regarding the board of zoning, as it said. If someone's requesting a variance more than 25% of what the code allows, BZI had to approve it by unanimous vote. We think city council would require unanimous vote to approve anything, and so, to me, it was like giving any one person veto. It's like, shouldn't be that way. They should be, and the code was changed and amended to reflect that, so that you just need the majority of four, of four BZI members to change anything. That really went beyond even what council can do. I mean, they can override that decision of the planning commission, but it takes a three-quarters or a supermajority, not unanimous.
Well, we need to set a public hearing for this. We set a public hearing for item number one, the planned unit development, we said 7:00. I don't think we said that specifically, but we need to, and then we need to pick a time for this one.
Yeah, this, I mean, we could hold this on the same day, and I think, I think it's in the staff reports. I suggested 7:00 for the first one, maybe 7:10 for the other. If we run over on the PUD discussions, that's fine.
One at 7:00?
Yeah, that was.
Is that your motion?
No, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission set a public hearing, council chambers, on March 10th at 7:00 PM, in the matters of the zoning text amendment for new planned unit development regulations to replace the existing sections 154 dot 030 and 154 dot 031, as well as zoning text amendment for revising section 154 dot 580 regarding zoning amendments. For 7:00 PM. Seven, 10?
Seven, the second is 7:10.
Okay, 7:10. Thank you.
Second.
All right, you've heard the motion, the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The only other item, Mr. Kaiser, is the annexation process and Hartman Road annexation.
Yeah, I just wanted to inform you, as I think we brought this up at the last meeting, talking about some, one of the reasons we're trying to move the PUD regularly, about changes ahead, and also the fact that the annexation process has been changed by council, and modified their rule for the 10. And they want a little more input or a little more knowledge about what a developer intends to do with property, so it kind of puts a burden on us, because the annexation time for this fell out following state budget, you know, ORC, you have so many days to do this, and then so many days to do that. So that's kind of why we're in a rush to move forward with the PUD regulations, because the Hartman Road annexation that we talked about, I think it was the Vance property, the 81 acres, at the last meeting, city council did authorize the moving forward with a pre-annexation agreement. So if you recall the plan that I submitted you last week as part of that discussion, that's kind of their general layout, and that's what we will be reviewing here in the near future as the process, you know, goes down the line. Problem is that we're looking at changes and annexations and the development plan that are all coming in together, and we're trying to straighten them out to see, you know, so we don't put the cart before the horse, what do we need to do? And kind of get things out in place in a practical way. So just wanted to let you know that that's going to be coming down the road, so that's why we want to turn to the text amendments moving.
So this information at this point?
It's, yeah, it's informational.
All right, is there anything else, the commission, this evening, members? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn. Do you want to adjourn?